Time is now 6:00 PM. I'm gonna call this March regular board meeting to order. Want to thank you all for being with us at this time. I'm gonna call on Jasper Middle School Principal, Mr. Corey Thompson, if he'll lead us in a moment of prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day you've given us and every day before. Thank you, Lord, for everyone gathered with us tonight. I pray, Lord, for your wisdom to help guide the decisions that will be made by this board, not just for tonight, but in the future, for everything, for the best, for our kids, our staff, and our community as a whole. I pray, Lord, for your healing power for everyone in our nation, our country, and the world in all illnesses. And again, Lord, please be with this board as they make the decisions for our community. Amen.
This time, I want to call on Harvey Elementary Principal, Mrs. Marla Callahan, to lead us in the prayer.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Let's bring us down to section four. Dr. Webb, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do, Mr. Chairman. First, I ask the board to make the following changes to the agenda. Remove item 7B, recognition and appreciation of Pickens County School System bus drivers, and reschedule at a later date when the coronavirus is no longer causing restrictions of large group gatherings. If all of our bus drivers were quarantined, we would have to close our schools, so we don't want assembling together possible. Also, add the following items, eight. Superintendent Report, sub-item D, online learning. Sub-item D, online learning. And add the following to item nine, action items. Sub-item I, waiver approval for policy JBCB, non-resident student for a Pickens High School senior. And sub-item J, approval of Ryan Hart renovations. And sub-item K, school closures.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. This time, can I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended? I may say in a second, but Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Fine and unopposed, thank you. This time, section five, student recognitions. We have some very special students with us, and I believe Ms. Christina Garner.
She's going to be here.
I'm sorry. We have another representative. Please come on up.
Thank you.
4-H presentations.
Christina's at a meeting at university, so.
Okay. We're glad to have you tonight.
Well, thank you. Pickens County had 13 students competing DPA for this year for 4-H. If you're not familiar with DPA, DPA is District Project Achievement, and it is a 4-H public speech contest. This competition comes with a lot of hard work and a lot of preparation. Students must choose a category for the project from among 50 projects, prepare a demonstration or speech, posters, or maybe even a recipe if they're doing a cooking. Practice numerous times, and then present this to the judges at the district competition, as well as any other competitors that are in the room, our parents, or other leaders. So it is an opportunity for children to get used to giving public speeches. And we have a group that I really had a lot of fun working with, and I know Tracy did too, with our Cloverleaf District Project Achievement. It was fifth and sixth graders, and their contest was on Saturday, February 15th, Rock Eagle. And prior to the contest, each student attended at least four practices at the extension office to work with different one-of-us adults in practice. And they also had to prepare their posters and all the different things that they use as visual aids. And we, first thing I want to do is start with these folks, and this is Luz, and she's Sophia's mama. Oh, no, yeah, Sophia's daughter. And she's helped some too, of some of this stuff. So I'm gonna look through this, 'cause guess what? I just got it. And I'm also gonna be giving their pens, recommendation pens. So you'll want to get a pen, and I'll hand this to Sari Flores. Micah Robinson, and Micah's not here tonight, but he was one of our other fifth-grade participants. And he got first place in the dairy foods project. You got second place.
I got first.
You got first. Your twin got first. I got confused. You got first in the fruit, vegetables, and no, you got first in?
Sunflowers.
Yes. Flowers, plants, and throats, yeah. Okay. Sunflowers was. And she said that that was a perfect speech for her because Flores is Spanish means flower. Okay, Sophia Scott, she had first place in archaeology. Owen Mummaw, who had second place in forestry and wood science. And he had a project that was real dear to my heart, because that used to be my project when I was 4-Her. And he was telling about the American chestnuts. And actually, he thinks he has one, so we've gotta have a scientist come up and check it out this spring when they come back. Sheila Flores, and she's in the fruits, vegetables, and nuts. She did the pumpkin project. I'm not sure Dylan's here, but Dylan Lowe, he was in the clothing and textile project. Oh, that's Sky for credit. And Dylan Lowe was second place in the clothing and textiles, because we have a fifth-grade winner and a sixth-grade winner. He's not here, okay. And then we had Olivia Smith, who was second place in historic people. And she gave a demonstration on Martha Washington. Okay, some of our juniors and seniors aren't here either, but we'll go ahead and recognize them. Connor Watson, he had first place in the health project, and his was on concussions. Colin Watson, and these are my grandchildren. I know what they do. He had second place as a senior in the wildlife and marine science project, and his project was on the loggerhead sea turtles. Riley Davis was another one of our senior 4-Her, and he had third place in the outdoor recreation project. And he talked about hiking and camping on trails, the possibility of meeting bears, and how you were supposed to respond to it. Okay. Sherlin, credit. This is one of Ms. Tracy's special girls. She had second place in the food labs, food fair project, where she had to actually prepare a dish. And I'm gonna tell you, that would be tough. I don't know that I've got to do that, because everything has, they watch everything you do, don't they? Yeah. And you have second place. Let me get this to Luz, too. And I actually have your ribbon, because she wasn't there on Sunday morning. So there's your ribbon, and then she gets a pen, too, so we'll get her all fixed up here. Okay, and we had, in the junior, food for health and sports, Hayley Howard. Here's Hayley. And she was, you got your ribbon, yeah, did you see? Okay. And she was giving her speech on having the right equipment, and the right equipment also means the right foods for sports. How you have to eat, that's part of your equipment, really, is how you eat. Okay, and then, I think that's all the kids. And the interesting thing is, we took 13 children, and every child we took placed in the top three. And while you're getting your picture, I'll also say, when you get to be a junior and senior, not only do you do the speech, you have to do the year's portfolio, which shows your whole year's work. So all of our seventh grade up students had to do, they had to turn in a portfolio that counts as half, 50% of their score. So that kind of tells you that they had to work all year to get there. So we're very proud of our 4-Hers. Thank you, kids.
Well, congratulations to all these students. They're becoming frequent visitors of ours, and we love seeing these 4-H students and all their great accomplishments. We're very proud of them. Thank you, Ms. Carlin, for being here tonight and for all your work with 4-H. And extend our appreciation to Ms. Garner and Ms. Buckingham. I know they do a lot of work with them, too. Thank you. If y'all want to stay, or if you would want to leave, you're more than welcome. If y'all want to leave, we'll pause for a minute. We'll move on to our next recognition. One I did not know existed, but was pleasantly surprised to see it did. So Ms. Destiny Shook, Director of PR and Community Engagement. Oh, Dr. Webb, do you want to?
Well, just briefly, next week, March 16 through 20, is School Board Appreciation Week. And representing the public as elected officials, especially on local school matters, is not an easy task. School board members are often called upon to make difficult decisions related to the education of our children and grandchildren. Unfortunately, most of the time, they're underappreciated. Pickens County, we have a relatively new school board, but they are fast learning the importance of their positions. I'm pleased to publicly announce that all of our school board members have already completed the courses required by the state of Georgia as provided by the Georgia School Boards Association. And they've done this almost six months ahead of the required date. They're working hard as individuals to become better acquainted with their duties and collectively to become a more unified board. This community is blessed to have dedicated citizens who are willing to serve in elected positions, especially in such difficult times. Now, I call on our Director of Community Engagement and Public Relations, Destiny Shook, to further recognize and honor our board members.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Dr. Webb, and Mr. Young. Next week, school districts across Georgia will be honoring the work and efforts of local school board members. Tonight, we would like to honor the Pickens County Board of Education members, who currently serve our district. Ms. Joeyda Youngblood, Ms. Sue Finley, Mr. Tucker Green, Mr. Steve Smith, and Ms. Donna Enos. As citizens of our community, these individuals were elected or appointed to represent the community's voice on education matters and to set the vision for the school district. The individuals sitting before you this evening spend countless hours fulfilling their responsibilities and working to continually improve our education system. These men and women are constitutional officers of Georgia and are responsible for setting educational policies, employing the superintendent, operating a transportation system, and dispersing school funds. They are advocates for the children in our local public schools and must study, evaluate, and decide why actions are in the best interest of all those students. Up on the counter, you will see a banner from one of our schools, out here in the front, along with a couple of larger cards that were submitted from schools to say thank you to each of you. Two of our teachers sent in cards, and I'll read to you what it says. "Thank you for all that you do for the students, faculty, and staff in our schools. We appreciate you." Signed by Mallory Chulers and Alicia France from Tate Elementary. As I looked through the cards that some of our students have prepared for you, I was reminded of a few things outside of their obvious creativity. First, kids love everybody. They are kind and gracious with their words. In some of the cards, they even told you that they loved you like their mommies and daddies. Secondly, a picture is worth a thousand words, in this case, maybe a few thousand. But most importantly, the consistent theme was thankfulness and gratitude. They are grateful for the wonderful teachers they have, for the playground equipment they have, but they were especially grateful for the job each of you did. In fact, to steal a phrase from one of them, "You have a tough job, but you've got this." Tonight, we are pleased to have with us Ms. Tammy Casperson, here behind me, of I Think Financial, formerly IBM Credit Union, here in Jasper. They stepped up to provide a special recognition gift this evening, a beautifully engraved glass certificate.
So the certificate says, and it has each one of your names engraved on the certificate's plaque. So it says, "With greatest appreciation, thank you for your service to our students, our faculty, and our community of Pickens County. And we want to thank you and we honor you, because we know it's a tough job, and we know it's just a small little token of appreciation from your community and your students and your faculty and your administration. And being the I Think Financial Credit Union here in Jasper, taking care of not only the citizens, but the whole entire school system since 2009, we were also very honored to present this plaque to each one of you."
When I call your name, if you would like, you can walk around to the front. We'll present you with your boxed glass certificate, a paper certificate, and your cards from students within the county. Or if you prefer, you can stay seated and we'll deliver them to you. Ms. Donna Enos. Mr. Steve Smith?
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that very much.
Mr. Tucker Green? Ms. Sue Finley?
Thank you.
And Ms. Joeyda Youngblood?
And those that just received a certificate, could you mind standing for just a quick moment so we can get your picture?
While you're standing, thank you to each of you for your commitment to our students, their families, and our staff. On behalf of the district, I would like to also thank Tammy Casperson and I Think Financial for their generosity in helping us to recognize your work by providing personalized gifts. Congratulations, and happy Board Appreciation Week next week.
Thank y'all very much. That's more than y'all should have done. We appreciate it very much, and I look forward to reading my cards. Thank you. Next recognition, we have a special staff recognition. Call on Director of Operations, Mr. Stacy Gillis. Almost promoted you with a PhD. Almost adopted Gillis.
Before, Mr. Gillis, and just to the roster, Mr. Chairman, we've got many outstanding employees working in our school system. Almost monthly, one or more of them are recognized at the local, state, and national level for their achievements, of course, from which our students and our teachers benefit. I'm asking Chief of Operations, Stacy Gillis, to recognize one of our very special staff directors who's recently been recognized nationally. Mr. Gillis?
I'm gonna ask Beth to come on down while we talk to her. Beth Thompson, our school nutrition director, does a fabulous job for us here, and we're very fortunate to have her in our system. Come on, Beth. I've always told her that when she lays on going with her, because you can't do it without one like her. Beth, we got you.
Thank you.
I feel I'm standing right here, but this award is the Food Service Equipment and Supplies Award. It's a magazine award for the company of food service and equipment. The professionals that receive this award are top achiever awards. And these awards will recognize excellence among food service consultants, equipment, supply dealers, manufacturing reps, and operators. And Beth got the top achiever in the operator category for Pickens County School District. And with this group of top achiever recipients, it's not what they do, but how they do it that sets them apart. Their thoughtful approach to not only their businesses, but also how their supply chain relationships play a key role in the way they position their businesses, including their associates, for the continued growth and success. What we do here is she deals with a, what you call it around here? What's the company, the group you?
Oh, the GEC Large Equipment.
The GEC Large Equipment. She chairs this board and goes out and gives bids from all the distributors of all kitchen equipment and all of the school systems. Does a great job. She's a great rep. She's kind to them. They appreciate it. She beats them down to the best price. And everybody in this area of North Georgia can buy from this consortium and get a better deal for their schools. And this is why they like Beth so good. She is so kind, and so generous, and so smart, that she works great with them. Normally, a restaurant chain of some size, like a Chili's or something like that, is the winner of this award. They gave it to the school district because of all her hard work with all the reps and manufacturers. So she deserves big praise.
Come up over here. Your operation. Your operation, France.
Thank you.
I'm gonna brag on her a little more. I don't know, I didn't realize when I got on the board, that the job they do is tremendous. They serve more meals every day, Monday through Friday, than any restaurant in this county. They feed a lot of people. And we have a lot of students. The most important thing we do for them is we give them a fresh, hot meal to eat every day, and that might be the only meal they have every day. So they have a great responsibility, and they do a tremendous job. And they're always looking at ways to be innovative and to feed more kids, to get pens to eat breakfast. They do, I know, breakfast carts, breakfast-to-go plans. They do a great job. A lot of people don't know, she operates in the black. She, correct me if I'm wrong, she operates on her own funds. She's self-sufficient. Food services is 100% self-sufficient. That's another incredible feat. They are great people. I've had the pleasure of helping serve one day at the high school a couple of months ago. I helped serve lunch a week or two ago at Harmony. I don't know how they do it. I was dying sweating. I couldn't keep up. They do hard work, and they do a great job, and Beth is right at the middle of that. So thank you, Beth.
Okay, next item, section eight, Superintendent Reports. Dr. Webb?
Mr. Chairman, the board heard proposals for amendments last work session, last Thursday, correction Friday. And Ms. Smith is here to answer any additional questions you might have. Otherwise, I recommend that the board approve these budget amendments. I'm sorry, we got ahead of ourselves there. Ms. Smith is available to answer any questions, but she's gonna take you through the financial report first.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. We'll review our general fund. As of March 10th, we have collected 71.42% of our budgeted revenue, expended 62.58% of our budgeted expenditures. Always draw your attention to that top line, ad valorem taxes. We're at a 91.32% collection, which is about on target for this time of year. Do y'all have any questions on the general fund report? If not, if y'all just. Our capital project SPOSS summary, our SPOSS revenue for the month of February 2020 was $419,301.68. We earned the interest of $444.52. We have begun the transfers of that designated money for our Pickens Junior High School project. We transferred $1 million during the month of February. Expenditures totaled $1,559,664.91, which brought our month-end SPOSS balance to $1,272,453.18. Of course, we always like to report we have no debt in Pickens County. And one final note, our 12-month average on our SPOSS collection is running $453,969.57. So we are still holding our own on that. Didn't have as good a month as we did last month, but we'll take it. Y'all have any questions? That's all. I have Dr. Webb.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Young, Lieutenant?
All right, Mr. Webb, we will start with staff. Do the staff first. Last month's winner was Harmony Elementary, and this month's winner is Harmony Elementary. Callahan, if you would, come on down. And I believe, if I'm counting correctly, that's your fourth time with the staff award this school year.
Thank you very much.
Just stay right here.
Okay.
I don't want to give anything away, but let me just say that when we recognize attendance for the schools, this month's winner is Harmony Elementary at 95.72. Corey, you're gonna have to give it up.
Thank you.
That is awesome. Congratulations, Marla. Marla's doing an awesome job for us at Harmony, and it shows in their numbers. And just a quick point of reference there, attendance. I know there's a lot going on right now, and the board was curious about that. Our numbers are holding. We're not seeing any major jumps in absenteeism. As I look down through the numbers, all of our schools were hovering at 93 or better. From yesterday to today, we saw a slight jump over the overall system of about 35 kids. So we have not seen any huge jumps in those numbers, just so that everyone knows. Dropouts. Last month, I was happy to announce that for January, we did not have any dropouts. For February, I have to report that we had three dropouts, and you can see them listed up there. Brings our total to 14. And I've said before, 14 is not a good number, but at this point in the school year, it is a good number for us in terms of where we are at this point in the year. So our staffs, again, are to be commended for their hard work on attendance. Kids like to come to school, and it shows. I think our guys are doing an awesome job, and the board's to be commended for that. That concludes my report, Dr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next, Stacy Gillis with the Operations and Construction Report.
Well, it's been dry a couple of days, so. Well, it's been dry a couple of days, so we've been able to accomplish a few things in maintenance that we haven't been able to do lately, but that's a good sign. But we're very busy right now, especially doing extra cleaning and care for the schools and just trying to make sure we've got the cleanest, safest schools we can have. Transportation, from the last training class, we have one person who has finished their CDL and will be driving for us soon. Another one is finishing up the written test and will be taking the additional training as needed just to get their final CDL. We will be having another training class on March 16th to the 20th. Look like I've got four other people lined up for that. I'm excited. We're getting a few people coming in again. We're also getting ready for the big bus rodeo. That'll be Saturday, April 18th at 9:00 AM, and of course, you're all welcome. We'd love for you to come. We have some golf carts we can ride you around in and show you, and you visit for a while. It's interesting. You see what they can really do with a bus. Food and service, we just talked about a little bit, but I wanted to give Beth some more kudos. The National School Breakfast Week was a success, and she averaged feeding nearly 1,700 breakfasts per day, which is about 300 more than normal today. And we're still participating in the State Breakfast Challenge that runs to the end of April, and we hope to keep the momentum going from that. And that award that she received was not just a local award or a state award, that was a national award. So it was amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Gillan. Also, the item that I added, I've got good news for the board. We now have an online learning plan that we can implement in case of long-term school closings. I've asked Mrs. Libertor and Mr. Shay to present an overview of the plan to you tonight. It's yet untested, but we will continue refining it at the time we have available. I should say also, I am impressed, I am, with a team of staff and principals and academic coaches and teachers who were able to put this together with only a few days. You have some very, very talented and innovative people working in this school system. Miss Libertor?
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Good evening. I would like to reiterate what Dr. Webb just said and give a huge, huge thank you to everybody who has been instrumental in designing the closure, possible closure plans. I have been so impressed with how quickly it came together and how smoothly it all came together. And speaking with principals this evening is even better than I thought. So that's even better. The school administrators, academic coaches, and teachers have all worked together to collaborate to ensure that we are going to meet the needs of the students and the teachers. We want to make sure that all of the students are addressed. Technology Department has also been very instrumental in supporting the schools and making sure things are happening and happen happening in a very timely manner. I can honestly say it has been such a pleasure and an honor working with such a group. So just to give you a quick overview of what the team came up with. Here, first of all, I would like to give a little update from Ms. Smith that no students or employees have been currently or are being currently monitored for showing any signs of COVID-19. All schools, thanks to Ms. Smith, are prepared to address any issues as they arrive in regard to the students or staff becoming ill. The nurses have been trained, and she is constantly keeping up with the CDC and Department of Health in keeping everybody updated. So with that being said, if anything should arise or we need to close, we have to look at all the issues at hand. First one is being continuation of student learning in a productive manner. Not just fluff, not just a little bit of review, but we need to keep the learning continuing. We need to address available internet access and devices, and we don't know if, when, or how long we may be out. These are all things that we had to address earlier this week. So we brought together two different groups. We realize that the elementary schools have different needs that need to be addressed than the older groups, but all the schools agreed with this. Each grade level will create two weeks of relevant, I should have underlined that, relevant work to assign as needed, and they agree the project-based assignments are appropriate. Now, when we say project-based, we're also talking about what they can do at home without having to go out and spend a lot of money or anything like that. Parents are currently being surveyed to determine who does not have internet access at home. And Mr. Shay can address a little bit more of that. And the schools will research and identify quality professional learning for the staff as needed.
Let me contrast that. As of right now, the people that have responded to the survey, we're hovering around 6% of our families right now that do not have internet access at home.
Of 6% who do not?
6% who said no, that you don't have internet access at home of the people that have responded.
During implementation, the teachers and staff all intend to be available for questions and assistance during the school day, during regular school hours. So if the students are home working on something, they will be able to contact the teachers, including the special ed teachers, because the co-teachers will also be available keeping up with the IEPs. And speaking with Ms. Bone earlier, the, all of these special ed teachers are prepared to address the needs of their students. Teachers and all other staff will complete professional development as assigned by the administration also. At the elementary level, for preparation, all the schools have been looking into pulling the teachers and ensuring each class is active with either ClassDoja or Remind. These are communication methods with the families, and a lot of the elementary families are very active in one or both of those. Teachers are collaborating with the technology department to ensure we have the most current email addresses in infinite campus. And a limited number of Chromebooks will be available for families that do not have a computer at home.
Not opposed. I think you have another slot.
Implementation continuing. Parents will be notified of assignments via ClassDoja, Remind, or email. All assignments will have a note attached to it that the teacher will be available for questions and assistance between 8:30 and 3:30, typical school hours. Now, we recognize that the younger students are not as tech savvy, but we also recognize many of them are tech savvy. So in grades K-2, the schools have decided that packets will be created as needed for the students that are unable to access the internet while out of school. If there's no time to distribute, each school will have bins with packets in the front of the school so the parents can come by and pick it up for the correct grade level. Students will also be encouraged to read a book at their respective reading level and answer questions or draw pictures according to the age level related to the book to show understanding. Grades 3 and 4, Google Classroom or Blended, I believe is another platform, will be used to create online or offline assignments. Students will be encouraged to read a book also. Now, what has been added with this, with speaking with the principals tonight, they're also giving choice boards where the students will have access, excuse me, have access to either online or offline assignments, and they can choose some of the assignments that they're going to complete. Okay, the upper grades, grades 5 through 12. In the junior high, would you like to talk about this one? This is what you're doing.
The junior high, our plan is to hand out devices very similar to the high school where we are 1-1. Our plan is to extend that down into the 7th and 8th population as well. The middle school population, not really sure if sending devices home with every child is necessary, but we will allow them to get a device upon request if they do not have a device at home. In the 7th and 8th population, they do more of the online, and they use more of the Chromebooks on a day-to-day basis than they're getting ready for the high school where they do take their devices home every day. So it's just a progression that we have been talking about, but now we will accelerate that process a little bit more. Any questions so far?
For the approximate 6%, if internet access is needed, we do have hotspots around the county that they may visit safely. Okay, all work will be assigned via Google Classroom, but may include directions to USA Test Prep, iExcel, EdPuzzle, or other sites as needed. And I know Ms. Walker has, I was looking for her. I know she's out there somewhere. There you are. Ms. Walker has been working with the schools to make sure that we have access at home to some of the programs that the students use in the schools. All of the assignments, again, will have a note that the teacher will be available for questions and assistance during the school day. All of the grade levels recognize that there may be some work that is not completed when the students return back. There will be a rolling makeup time, and that, I can't say the amount of time given because it depends on how many days they might be out. And again, thank you for the teamwork. Does anyone have any questions?
Again, let me thank you and all the group that put this together. I know it's been a difficult thing because about a week ago, we just really weren't sure it could even happen. And there are other school systems now that are calling and just wanting to know, how did y'all do all this so quickly? So we'll pass along to them how we're doing things, and we like to leave where we can. I know this is not perfect, and there's going to be some lumps in the road as we go, but if our parents and our students and our teachers will be patient, then this could certainly work to our advantage, not only soon, necessary, but certainly in the future. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for all the hard work on that. I know you have been working diligently on that the last couple of weeks. Down to Section 9, Action Items.
Mr. Chairman, policy, FDC permits you to name certain areas within a school, bearing the names of outstanding citizens of the county, state, or nation. According to this policy, I recommend that the baseball and softball field at Pickens High School be now and forever named Dunn Field, and that a ceremony be scheduled at an appropriate time later to publicly recognize those for whom this honor is bestowed.
Thank you for that recommendation, Dr. Webb. I'll touch on that slightly. There's this individual and their family are no strangers to the community. They've been outstanding contributors for a long time and continue to. They have a great heart for Pickens County and for Pickens County schools, and it's reflective in their personal accolades and their contributions and continue to be. I do look forward to a ceremony in the next little while when we can schedule that. I did speak to the recipient yesterday, earlier in the week. He's very humble and honored, and he would be here tonight with his family, but he's out of town on business. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to now and forever name the baseball and softball field located at Pickens High School as Dunn Field. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Sub item B, approval of personnel. What's your recommendation, Mr. Webb?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Personnel Action Request as presented, and which include, first, the normal monthly request labeled PAR number 1; second, the FY21 request labeled PAR number 2; and then also PAR number 3 with recusal, and PAR number 4 with recusal. This requires separate votes for each one.
Appreciate that recommendation. I'm going to entertain a motion that we approve PAR 1 and 2 as amended. Do I have that motion?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Young. Will I do a here a second?
Sir.
Second by Ms. Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. PAR 1 and 2 are approved as amended.
And we appreciate the board's action on that by rehiring our teachers as quickly as we have. Certainly gives us an opportunity to begin to move forward in replacing those who are retiring or who've resigned. So thank you, board. The next item is one I've already introduced, our budget item.
We have to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're okay. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve PAR number 3 as recommended. Motion by Ms. Ennis. Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Four in favor. Any opposed? Any abstained? Four in favor, one abstained. That Personnel Action Report is approved as recommended. And PAR number 4, do I have a motion to approve that PAR as recommended?
Make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Ennis to hear a second. Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Sorry, four in favor. Any opposed? Any abstained? One abstained, four in favor, one abstained. That PAR is approved as recommended. Next item is approval of the FY20 Budget Amendments. Ms. Smith went over those with us last week. Anything to add, Dr. Webb?
No, we've got a full amendment and a lot to do, and I'm in high gears. So thank you for holding me back if I go ahead. Any questions, Ms. Smith? Here and now, I recommend all budget amendments be approved as proposed.
Do I hear a motion to approve FY20 Budget Amendments? Motion by Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Finley. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Those budget amendments are approved, Ms. Smith. Item D, approval to purchase buses. I believe it's six new buses, 72 passenger buses through SPOSS funds. Anything to add on that, Dr. Webb?
Simply that our operations, transportation departments are seeking your approval to order buses now for the FY21 school year. Our Chief Operations Officer Stacy Gillan is here to answer any questions you might have. Here and now, I recommend the purchase of six buses, a total cost of $604,758 to be purchased with these SPOSS funds. This pricing is based on state contract as indicated.
Do I hear a motion to approve that purchase?
I make that motion.
Ms. Young, will I do a here a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. That is approved. Sub item E, approval of the Georgia College Memorandum Agreement.
Our school system works in partnership with colleges and universities to promote teacher development and to raise P-12 student achievement. Georgia College and State University has proposed such a partnership similar to the ones we have with other universities, and I recommend approval of the memorandum agreement with Georgia College as presented.
Dr. Webb, do I hear a motion to approve that memorandum of agreement?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Ennis. Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. That memorandum is approved. Sub item F, approval of the Voting Delegate and an Alternate at the 2020 Georgia School Board Association Summer Conference and Delegate Assembly. That conference, I believe, will be in June in Savannah. I'll open up the floor. Do I hear a motion to approve a nominee to serve as the delegate? I need a, I'll do, I need a, I'm going, I'll make a motion to nominate Ms. Donna Ennis to serve as the delegate to the GSBA conference. Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. And I hear a motion for a nominee to appoint as the alternate. Mr. Smith, appoint Tucker Green to serve as the alternate for the 2020 GSBA Delegate Assembly. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Young. Will I do a further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed.
If I can say, you will enjoy South If I can say, you will enjoy South Georgia in the summer.
Sub item G, approval of minutes. We have minutes to approve for the February thirteenth call meeting and regular meeting, the February twenty-second call meeting, and the March sixth work session. Everybody have a chance to review those minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Motion by Mr. Smith to hear a second.
Sir.
Second by Ms. Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Those minutes are approved. Ms. Sigerson. Item H, approval of surplus. I think we had a printer, a broken printer is the only surplus we have from the special ed department. Do I hear a motion to approve that surplus as presented? Motion by Mr. Smith to hear a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Sub item I, waiver of approval. Dr. Webb?
Mr. Chairman, it's come to my attention that we have a student whose parents recently moved to Allen County under policy J B C B, non-resident students. This requires the student to withdraw from our schools. However, the student and his parents would like for him to finish the school year at Pickens High School and graduate with his class. He has attended our school since kindergarten, and the principal has asked for the board to consider a waiver. According to his academic and disciplinary records, he is a student in good standing. I recommend approval of a waiver to policy J B C B for this student.
Thank you for that recommendation. The boards have, I believe, opportunity to review all the information on this student. Do I hear a motion to approve the waiver?
I make a motion to approve the waiver.
Motion by Mr. Smith to hear a second.
I second.
Second by Ms. Youngblood. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. That motion, or waiver is approved. Sub item J, Reinhardt renovations. Dr. Webb?
Yes, Reinhardt University has submitted detailed architect renderings for the renovation of the building near the board offices needed for the satellite nursing program, which we are partnering. You've been provided copies of these renovations, and most of which are minor. Mr. Gillen is available to assist and answer any questions you might have. Hearing none, I recommend approval of the proposed Reinhardt renovations.
Appreciate that. Again, the board appreciate y'all getting us all that information. The board had to review. Would like to add, just for public knowledge, that there's no cost to the board education on this. This is all by the Reinhardt University. So they've been good partners, and we look forward to continuing to work with them. Do I hear a motion to approve these renovations?
I make a motion to approve the renovations.
Motion by Mr. Smith to hear a second.
Sir.
Second by Ms. Ennis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. You can give Reinhardt a rating, Dr. Webb.
Thank you.
Sub item K, school closing. Dr. Webb?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in the interest of the safety and welfare of our students and employees and others in this community, I recommend closing schools beginning Monday, March sixteenth through Friday, March twenty-seventh, at which time buildings and buses will be deep cleaned, and face-to-face instruction will be substituted with online learning. Additional days will be determined if necessary, not later than Thursday, March twenty-sixth. Instructions for employees will be forthcoming tomorrow.
Thank you for that recommendation, Dr. Webb. I want to add, I want to thank our team. They've done a great job, as you've already seen in the presentation earlier tonight, being proactive weeks ago before anyone had really an idea what this virus would develop into. And because of that, we can, you know, we're ready to, to continue on largely uninterrupted, and that's a credit to them and their hard work. I want to thank our community partners, because this situation has been moving rapidly, as you all know, and largely this is based around the, the health professionals are leading this issue. We had a presentation last Friday from our director of health services, the local director of our Pickens County Health Department, and the regional director out of Dalton. They're doing a great job staying ahead of us. I want to give them credit, and of course, they're working through the federal and state officials. We also want to thank our local officials. Commission Chair Rob Jones is keeping us updated on what the county and city governments are doing and what they're planning, and he, of course, had additional information from his side of things, of people he interacts with and involved with, and the information he had. He came and presented it to the board today, and it was very valuable, and I appreciate that from him. And that's, but, but anyway, we, safety is a top priority of our students and staff, and we believe we have a plan that this team has put together that we can keep our students and staffs safe and not interrupt the instruction. So with that, I hear a motion to approve that recommendation from the superintendent.
I make that motion. Second, Ms.?
Motion by Ms. Ennis and a second by Ms. Finley. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. At this time, section ten, more comments? Any more comments?
I'd like to say something, Mr. Green.
Ms. Finley?
Yep. At a recent board meeting, one or more people expressed some frustration, and when you all address us, our board policy is that we're supposed to just listen. We can't have a, can't have a dialogue. But after the meeting, I can stay as long as anybody wants. Now, by law, we cannot have all the board meet with you, and I'm only one person. I can't fix anything tonight, but I can listen. And if you would like to stay and just share your thoughts with me that I can pass on, I'd be more than happy to do that if anybody wants to take advantage of that. If not, I'll go home.
Thank you, Ms. Finley. Any other board comments? If not, section eleven, public participation. A few community members signed up for public participation tonight, as is tradition, I always do for formality reasons. I am going to share with you the public participation policy for the Board of Education as originally adopted in nineteen ninety-four. Meetings of the Board of Education are structured to allow the board to conduct its public business. Meetings of the board are open to the public but are not to be confused with public forums. When time permits, the Board of Education, as a matter of general operating procedure, offers an opportunity for legal residents of Pickens County to address the board in open session. Following rules shall be adhered to. To be placed on the agenda, a citizen must request to appear before the board in writing at least five days prior to the regular monthly meeting of the board. The request must state clearly the topic or issue to be addressed. Each citizen whose name is placed on the agenda will be given five minutes to make their comments, but the total time allotted to citizen participation will be limited to twenty minutes. Citizens may reduce additional concerns to writing and submit to the Board of Education if five minutes does not provide sufficient time. Where several citizens wish to address the same topic or issue, the board reserves the right to further limit discussions should they become repetitive. While citizens may use their allotted time to take serious issue with board decisions, the board will not permit anyone to become personally abusive of individual board members or board employees. When issues arise and stimulate high community interest, the board may schedule special meetings specifically to invite public comment. In those circumstances, the board will establish special guidelines for participation. The board will not respond to comments or questions posed by citizens in their presentations, but will take those comments and questions under advisement. And the first public participant signed up is Cheryl Sams.
A lot of my comments do not come from the ethics of government. Ethics in government defines conflict of interest as any situation where a personal interest of a public official in a matter before them may prevent them from making an unbiased decision with respect to that matter. Trust is important to an effective relationship between public officials and the public they serve. This trust depends on avoidance of the mere appearance of impropriety as well. The public trust in this board is broken. How, you ask? Ms. Enis and Ms. Youngblood are employees of the Mountain Ed Charter High School, or medical, MedEd, Mountain Ed, and as such, are governed by the Board of Mountain Ed. Our superintendent sits on the board at, at Mountain Ed, and our superintendent in that position has supervision over Ms. Enis and Ms. Youngblood. But in their position on the Pickens County Board of Education, they are supervisor over that same superintendent. Direct conflict of interest. Mr. Webb, you stated on March the sixth that Ms. Enis and Ms. Youngblood would recuse themselves from any vote concerning Mountain Education. Then why did they sit in an executive session involving the forced resignation of Dr. Wilson? Why did they vote on accepting said board resignations? Why did they vote against the motion to reinstate Dr. Wilson? In doing so, they voted against Dr. Wilson as a Mountain Ed board member. Essentially, they voted to fire one of their supervisors. As of today, I do not have a response to my open records request as to the meeting in which the details of this forced resignation of Dr. Wilson were, in your words, Mr. Green, worked out. Emails to board members indicate public knowledge of this issue before the December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen emergency meeting. Those emails also indicate two board members had no knowledge of the planned-out details. So, Mr. Green, Ms. Enis, Ms. Youngblood, where did you have that meeting? Where did you decide? Some comments from the public have asked if I could prove that there was a meeting at Mountain Ed. I cannot because video was blocked from me being able to see it. But, Mr. Green, Ms. Enis, and Ms. Youngblood, as you have indicated, a lack of confidence as a valid reason to force a resignation, I ask for your resignations. Not only have I lost confidence in your ability to perform your duties, but members of the community have as well. Just read social media. One conservative citizen said he would vote for a feral pig before voting for any of you three. Let me assure you, we will not calm down, we will not be silent. As another social media post stated, we will take back our county. Also, why will this not address the issues of, why will you not address the issue of raising the senior tax exemption? Rick Jasper's has come to you, requested that you examine this, that you have a, a, a discussion on this matter, and that we, the citizens, citizens that you serve, want to know why you will not address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sams. The next participant signed up for tonight is Mr. Leonard Adams. Mr. Adams?
I've been a legal resident of Pickens County since nineteen ninety-four, and I believe I reside in the district too. I'm here to talk about public comment, public input. I have met with four, four members on the other, on the other, of the Board of Education, not, I'm at the Department of Education, the Board of Education here, two, two administrators and one, I guess, independent contractor. I agree with you on one thing, you have some very excellent people working on the other side of the desk. Now, public input is, or participation, every one of these people that I talk to, when I ask them what, you know, what could be done, or what would better help them do their jobs, thankfully, none of them said it was mine. They all said it would be community support, community input. Everybody up here ran on changing things. Right now, this current board has been, what, this current configuration is now, what, a year in, three and a year and a quarter? Well, we're a quarter of the way into this new year of the regularly scheduled board meetings, and I see some of the biggest problems facing this board is our students aren't ready to go on to the next level. We've got a school that made, I guess, a substandard list for the first time ever in the county, and we need a superintendent. Now, these things happen, but I've only been around, I mean, I've only been looking at this for, since December, when I realized that according to my tax bill, sixty-six percent of every tax dollar, my property tax hour goes to the Board of Education. According to Commissioner Jones at a meeting that he just had up in a big canoe, seventy-two percent of all the property tax dollars come to the Board of Education. I'm glad to see we don't have money problems. But if you want to get input from the public, you have to, some information has to come across the table. You're legally required to do, to present certain information at these meetings. That's just the minimum. Those are just the absolute minimum requirements that's, that's going, that you're required to do. Now, those, those three problems I talked about, the superintendent, let's go with the superintendent and the school being on the list, nothing has been mentioned, we're a quarter of the way into the, on the regular public meetings, nothing has been, come across at a regular meeting about this, about what you're doing. I looked on your website, and you expect to have the superintendent's situation corrected by, I think it's April sometime. I think that's, you expect to have that issue resolved. But as far as the meeting, right after the public meeting last, last month, you had to have a special meeting like five days later. It takes me five days to, to sign up to come talk to you, but yet you notify us and put a press release out on your website, maybe hang a note outside the door there, and expect us to know about a public meeting that you had concerning the superintendent position on Saturday. We just heard some of your own people talk that six percent of the people don't have internet access. I, for, you have, you have a, a program, I guess, a survey on your, on your, on your website. I didn't participate in it. I've been here at every meeting since January. No one told me about it. I shouldn't have to go to your website to look things up, and if I went a day earlier, I wouldn't have known that you even had, even had scheduled this meeting. I just think that public, you know, it needs to come both ways. We need more information. You people are completely in charge of the process. All it takes is a motion and a second to change policy. I understand this COVID nineteen may have put a little damp around things, but you've been here a whole year before that. Nothing has changed. And there's not any person up there that was voted, elected, appointed, or hired that needs to, to spend that kind of the county's money and not, and do it all in executive session and not keep the county informed. I'll be talking more later meetings. I don't want to interrupt mine. I find it a shame for a lot of time.
Well, thank you for those concerns. We'll definitely take those under consideration. The third and final participant is Ms. Wendy Jackson.
Ms. Sams addressed my point.
You don't want to, okay, thank you. Please reflect, Ms. Jackson, was sufficient. Okay, and so that brings us down to section twelve. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Enis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. We are adjourned at seven oh nine P M. Thank you all for being here.